I'd like to call it a order the January 20th, 2015 Currituck Board of Commissioners Meeting. I'll be chairing this meeting tonight as Chairman O'Neill is a little under the weather. And we just came, just concluded, left from a workshop where we discussed a present or was, had a presentation and discussion on fire flow standards. First thing I'd like to do is to ask Reverend Glenn H. McCraney, Navy Chaplain retired, to come forward, lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. All stand please.
Please stand. And let us pray. Dear God, we come tonight before your holy presence with humble hearts and our prayers in very troubling times in this world. The sound of bullets drowned out words of reconciliation, shouting overcomes the hearing. As we gather in this free assembly tonight, grant your divine wisdom upon our elected county commissioners, instill with them holy hearts with a holy purpose and visions of service to the people of Currituck. May they feel deeply the responsibilities of being leaders of our county, enlighten hearts and minds that they may behold the ever dawning of a bright and glorious new future for our beloved historical Currituck County. As residents of this area, may we be grateful people seeking to serve rather than only being served. May we always celebrate with grateful hearts the rich gifts of life, freedom, and liberty which has been bestowed upon us by the sacrifice of others. May we treasure these gifts and pass them on to future generations, these riches and many blessings which we have received from our ancestors. Guide us when we do not know which way to turn. Let us live and cherish your daily mercies and blessings as we trust in your holy word. For these things we pray in your holy name and all God's people say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic towards which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend McCraney. First order of business will be approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have a change I'd like to make. I'd like to remove item A under public hearings from tonight's agenda and be rescheduled at a later date.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we will remove this from our agenda for tonight to be subsequently scheduled at a later meeting. Now we have public comment. We have one person signed up for night, tonight. I will ask that she come forward. And we have three minutes. Our county attorney will be the timekeeper. I would ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mary Etheridge and I live at 846 Shawboro Road in Shawboro. Yesterday, our country honored Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. While reading some information about Dr. King, I came upon some quotes that may not be his most famous, but I hope you'll ponder them. Cowards ask the question, is it safe? Expediency asks the question, is it political? Vanity asks the question, is it popular? But conscience asks the question, is it right? And there comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe nor political or popular, but one must take it because it's right. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenges and controversy. One who condemns evil is just as guilty as one who perpetuates it. Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. And the time is always right to do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge. I don't see anyone else signed up for public comment this evening. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Seeing nobody, I will close the public comment and we will go into administrative reports. We have two items for tonight. The first one is Crawford Volunteer Fire Department Presentation relative to their ISO. And I would ask for Chief Daley to come forward.
Good evening. I have some items to pass out. Everybody gets homework tonight. We certainly have had our homework. Point it toward me. Oh, this thing? Okay. All right, we'll get it right here.
Is there something radioactive there?
It's your remote. I mean, your hair clicker.
Your counter's going off.
You never know.
Yeah. First, I want to say thanks for having us here. But before I start, I invited both Lower Currituck and Moayoc and Camden Fire Departments. Camden could not be here tonight, they had a previous meeting. But they are here and they were just as much a part of this as we were. We would not be able to do the method three inspection that we got without them. And we all do water shuttle and that's basically what a method three is. And this time, we capitalized on what we do every day, pretty much, out here because of the water sources that we have to rely on. So, thank you very much and we look forward to working with you in the future. So, I wanted them to be recognized as well. The first slide that we have here is basically representing what everybody kind of puts in their mind as about a thousand feet from a hydrant. And I just picked three examples. One of them is Currituck on the Sound. And that's what this is. There's really only one hydrant that services in the ISO world, Currituck on the Sound. And, yeah, that's right. That is the proper way to measure your thousand-foot measurements from a hydrant. Three hydrants that are behind the social service building are not in the equation for Currituck on the Sound. And we've all got phone calls from departments, James Mims has got them. I have a hydrant in my neighbor's subdivision behind me, but you've got to cut through the woods or you've got to drive around somebody else's driveway to get to it. But it's a thousand feet, but that's not the way it works. This is exactly how it works. So that's the purpose. And then, I know Currituck on the Sound has, has had conversations about fire insurance. The next slide is Bravview. And that's what you have in Bravview. There's a subdivision beside it, but those do not count in the original Bravview subdivision. The next slide is Bell's Island. So with that, you can see that there's very few hydrants on Bell's Island as well. The next slide is an email and I want to say thanks to Harry Lee because he's been a huge help in putting this together as well. This, this little email right here, what it comes down to is, one of the questions that's been asked to us is, how many homes were affected in the Crawford Township? Well, there are 2,785 homes, as he can see, within the GIS, within the five miles of each station. 1,255 are greater than a thousand feet from a hydrant. So the answer is, those 1,255 homes will now get the same class insurance as the people that are within a thousand feet of a hydrant. There are 1,530 people, according to the information he has, and this is 2011, 2012 data, so, you know, we're only as good as the data we have. But there's 1,530 homes that are already at a Class VI. This time, we received a Class V. One being best, 10 being basically no, no fire insurance. So that's information from the county. So that's where we're getting our numbers from, because that's been a big question that's been asked from a lot of times to me here lately. To do that, the method three, the next slide will give you water points. These water points, if you go through and, on these addresses, you'll see a blue sign that says water point. We had to put those up in recognition of, that is a draft site. That's where we can pull water from, where there's, Pointers Road Boat Ramp is an example. There's no hydrants down Pointers Road. So that is a water source that they recognized in this method of inspection. So the next slide is an example of just one of the signs you'll see. And then, the following slide is the flow data that we received from the previous inspection in 2007. And that is nothing but hydrants. And that's strictly from the state ISO record. And they pick random hydrants and we go and we flow them and they have all these mathematical programs and I can't help you on those equations, but that's how they come up with these, with these rates. The next slide is the water hydrants that we used at the bottom that are now part of the water source in our township. And you can see by the needed gallons and the available gallons, we did fairly well on those draft points. Our fire load is 3,500 PSI. And then, the last slide is Snowden Road. There was a couple of these that, at the end, because the county engineer had to help us in getting capacity of water that was available at that site, we all know that the sound sometimes, when the wind's blowing right, it, your water goes out. So we have a couple of them that we can use on the, on the sound side, but we could not put them in this equation because the engineer could not document that the water would be available at all times, basically. The other question that's been asked of me is, how many of these class ratings do we have in the state? Well, our inspector is, just had surgery, so I was not able to find out how many method threes there were, but this is the information I could gather from both North Carolina and Virginia in the different class ratings that the state has. And then, he provided me the next slide. Okay, go one more. Sorry, I didn't tell you. And that's basically showing you what they have countrywide. So, those are some of the questions that, that I've been asked. The only thing I cannot answer today is how many method three in stations in the, in the state of North Carolina there are. There are some sixes, there are some fives. So, the, there is an independent sheet that you were handed, it looks like this, it's not a slide. I, I put this together after we had turned the slide in for the county. This is basically comparing 2007 to 2014. And this, this is how we got to where we got. So, there were a couple, there were, were some increases. There is also one that is a community risk reduction, and that's like an extra credit. After they do the communications, the water supply, and the fire department, and the divergence, this, this community risk support is put right on without any deductions. So it's just an extra credit category that's the first time that they've had this. This inspection is the first time that they've started inspecting this year for this type of inspection. And I don't mean just the method three, I mean the whole inspection process has changed. There are a lot of different requirements in this inspection than we had in our previous inspection when we did the Class VI. And they're a lot stronger in training and in water flow. So, that, to compare, that's the best comparison I can give you between the two, because it's kind of like trying to compare some apples and oranges together, the way that the data was given to us in two different inspections. So, that being said, there are some things that, that I hope that the other departments can gain by what we've learned. That's where we're going next. There is some low lining fruit that we can still pick and put in this process that will help them, that is not going to cost a lot of money. There are things in this inspection process, like there is, there is a training facility within the county, that's now required, you get deducted points for not having that here. So there's, there's things that are going to cost some money, but in the grand scheme of things, you've got to look at the economics, what, what is the worst, the investment versus what you're going to gain out of it. So, I know we've got some, some meetings coming up with the, the study. There's a lot of things that I think we can add to what the study has done. Back when Hugh McCain was on the Fire Advisory Board, the chiefs got together and put kind of a, the same type of study together, not in the detail this study was. I don't think it ever was shown to the commissioners that I was aware of. I'd like for y'all to compare that to what we have at this study. There's good and bad in all of it, but I think the level of service is what everybody's got to, to come up with. We've got to establish what that level of service is, because every time we do inspections like this, it's going to require more and more and more. And in this particular inspection, the Class V helps the business category a lot more than the residential category. It is a reduction for the homeowners as well, but it's a bigger plus for the business side of it. So, you know, as going forward, I think that there's a lot of information that we've been able to obtain. I've talked to the inspectors, they're willing to come down, they're willing to do another class here in the county to help us further. AC Daniels, who some of y'all may know, and he retired, he retired the end of December. So, so he was a wealth of knowledge. I think, Dan, I know you've, you've talked to him several times. But Dave Summy, I believe, is the one that's taking his place now. And Dave Summy is, said he would be willing to, to help us any way we can as we move forward. So, the one thing I want y'all to take out of this is that, I think that we really need to come with a, what is the level of service? And that way, we can establish where we want to continue to work our inspection process so that we don't put too many dollars in, but then we put enough dollars in to make it feasible and economical for everybody. So, but the best part of this inspection is, within five miles of the station, no matter whether you're a thousand foot from a hydrant or not, you're going to have the same class rating. So that's, that's the huge thing, and that's what we wanted to push for, because that kind of evens the playing field with everybody's insurance. Because I know some of y'all may have gotten calls, I know I've gotten a lot of them about this, this particular item. So this kind of takes that out of the equation. So, so with that, is there any questions that anybody has in regards to this information?
Yeah, Chris, first of all, just, you know, thank you, the fire departments. I mean, I've been involved with some of the shuttle services a little bit, it's, it's, it's a lot of work to get that accomplished. And I just want to applaud all the fire departments that were here tonight and just again, say thank you for your efforts and your time, because it's all volunteer work, volunteer training. The question I had you'd mentioned about the training facility, you get the points deducted for that, are they looking for a, one facility countywide, or is it got to be for districts?
It could be one, one facility.
And it's got to be a dedicated training facility?
Correct. Correct. Yes.
Commissioner, I'd just like to ditto his comments. I know, I mean, I sat on the fire board for a long, a good while, I know how hard that you guys have worked on this, this shuttle deal. I'm glad, or three deal here, and I'm glad to see it come through and I know how much time and effort you've particularly put into it and your mutual aid companies has been a part of it, and congratulations. And I guess one other point I have, it's interesting that you, you showed the map up there about hydrant locations and a thousand foot, so many people don't understand that. I do. And, and it's not how the crow flies, you're exactly right. When you, when you're laying that line from that plug to wherever you're going, thousand foot's what you got, that's it. And so, I don't know how we've missed a boat in the past with, where we place our hydrants. I've been, I've been doing somewhat of a survey over in the Corolla community, plenty of hydrants, but a lot of them in bad locations. And it seems as though, from what you were showing a while ago, we have the same problem. You guys, I know, y'all get invited in the TRC phases of subdivisions and that type of stuff, is that not correct? Do the fire departments get involved in that?
The fire chief does. The fire marshal is, is involved in that. And they, he generally works with the fire chief, or if there's any questions related to that particular location.
My comment would be, just to realize that and stress how important those locations are and get your doggone, get your word in, in that, in that frame as they're going along and doing that pre-planning. And, and hopefully, we can, we can do some things better. I'd like to say, we're working on some stuff at Corolla. Water supply is an important investment and sometimes you can invest a few dollars in water supplies and, and make up for a whole lot of dollars that you may have to spend in equipment later down the line, if you, if you don't.
That's right.
So, that's what we're all about, is trying to figure out how we can do things a little better and a little cheaper. So, again, congratulations to y'all.
Thank you. The water shuttle is labor intensive, it's very labor intensive.
No doubt.
It ties up a lot of equipment, so the hydrants, this is not a method to replace the hydrants, by no means.
No, 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 no.
So, you know, it's just, it's just a way to level the playing field so we can level out the infrastructure a little bit.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, Chief Daley, you put this on our desks, taking action against cancer in the fire service.
I was coming to that.
Okay. Well, then, I'll wait to make a comment after that, but I would like for each and every one of you that are a current firefighter, volunteer, or a previous firefighter to stand up. I think that you guys need to be recognized, just in appreciation for what you've done on this project and just as firefighters in general, because we, we can't thank you enough.
If I could, just, just add, I just, this is remarkable. This is a remarkable, it's a testament to not only the dedication and the hard work of the people that made this happen, certainly for the safety, for the insurance ratings. I know since I've been on this board the last two years, we've had people come before us, older people living on a fixed income, who were lamenting their, actually their fire insurance, because they were over that thousand feet. And it has been a topic of discussion. And it's through actions like this, it makes a lot of difference to a lot of people that may not be here tonight, but it makes a difference, dollars and cents to them, which is important, but, you know, ultimately and primarily because of the, the added increase in the, the safety and the response. And it's just, again, it's a testament to you guys, your hard work and your dedication, really is. It just didn't happen, it took a lot, a lot of hard work, so.
Seven years of preparation is what it took.
Oh, yeah. We're proud of that, we're proud of you guys. Did you?
I did, I, I just wanted to make sure everybody didn't have any other questions. One of the things that we're becoming very active in, and we're, we're noticing unfortunately that we have more and more of it, is cancer. And we have been working with both the SIF insurance, there's a couple of programs that's been to the Fire Association, and they've, they've handed out pamphlets. One of the things that, there's been several years back that Dan and I talked about, was some type of incentive, you know, to assist with the fire departments and things. Policies like what is this is about, we're finding, we've had a number of our own in the fire department with cancer now, either in remission or being treated. And it's, it's becoming more common, it's becoming more uncomfortably common. And some of the policies that we've looked at is as cheap as $90 per person per year. That's pretty cheap through the SIF. So I want y'all to, I wanted you to have a copy of this. We're going to be working with the Fire EMS Board and, and bring it through and see what we can do. But this is, I think, an important thing that we need to consider to help the ones that are helping with the fire department. This also covers the police, it covers 91 dispatch, there's a lot of other adders to these policies for very little money, that I think would be a great incentive for volunteers of all kinds, especially with the fire service. But I'd like for y'all to take a look at this and we'll, we'll be coming back, but we want to get the rest of the information together, but this was just kind of something I wanted y'all to, to see tonight while I was up here, while I had your attention.
Well, to that, I want to add, I've spent the entire day over at Chesapeake General Hospital with my father, who was a career firefighter, and he's had his second bout of, of some type of cancer removed. And fortunate, he's got great surgeons, but he never drank, he never smoked a day in his life. And, you know, I'm attributing to his service as a firefighter and leading to that, and this just, I mean, just kind of confirms it. So, as a benefits person by profession and human resources, I'm with you on that one. Okay?
We'll be coming back.
Get your preventatives done, too.
Yes, yes. Okay. Well, thank y'all very much.
You, Chief Daley.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda would be, will be the wild horse management agreement. And for that, Mr. Scanlon?
Mr. Chairman, that, that's, that item will be mine. Back in the early 1990s, when the wild horses were allowed to roam freely throughout all the Outer Banks, we started to see with development and growth, a lot more interaction with the, with people, with vehicles. And unfortunately, several of those interactions resulted in the, the death of horses. And there was initiative done in the early 90s to have the horses relocated to north of Corolla. And that required a, an enclosure, a fence, to be constructed from the Sound to the ocean there at the North Beach Ramp. That fence is not permitted by KAMA, and so it required the county to go through a variance process in order to get that permitted. One of the requirements of that permit was that a plan be developed to address the long-term management of the horses and to continue to justify and to support the need of having that enclosure on the south side there at Corolla. So a, so the, a management plan was prepared, and in the agreement itself, it does require it to be periodically updated, and that's what we're bringing to you tonight, is the latest update of this plan. The agreement involves four main agencies that are either the major property owners in the full drive area and/or regulatory agencies. The Corolla Wild Horse Fund, a nonprofit, the County of Currituck, North Carolina, the state, and Fish and Wildlife, the federal government, are all the four main parties to the agreement and the signatories of the agreement. The agreement has eight sections to it. You see the, the titles of each section's coming up. I will tell you, we, the, the group that has been working on this in the full-drive area and/or regulatory agencies. The Corolla Wild Horse Fund, a nonprofit, the County of Currituck, North Carolina, the state, and Fish and Wildlife, the federal government are all the four main parties to the agreement and the signatories of the agreement. The agreement has eight sections to it. You see the titles of each sections coming up. I will tell you, we, the group that has been working on this, we have been doing this for about two years now, and we will talk in a second, but the herd size statement is the, the issue of contention. Everything else in this agreement is unanimously supported. introductory section talks about the horses and the value of the horses, the four agencies coming together, recognize that the wild horses are an integral part of the history and tradition of Currituck Outer Banks and the economic significance to the County of Currituck. The agreement adopts the following mission statement. The Wild Horse Advisory Board is committed to managing the wild horse population in a manner that establishes sustainable equilibrium between the wild horse population, development, wildlife, and the environment. The agreement recognizes a board that will oversee the agreement itself. That board is created from the following entities. The Corolla Wild Horse Fund has one member, the state has one member, I am the county's representative on that committee, the federal government has a member, and this Board of Commissioners appoints two citizen appointees. And those two citizens are required by the agreement to be residents of the Currituck Outer Banks. So, it is a six-member advisory board. It is this advisory board that prepared and developed this current proposed update to the agreement. The agreement has six goals in it, and of that six goals that are associated with it, thirty-six action items to undertake each goal. The first goal is to protect the habitat, long-term health, and genetic stability of the horses. It has thirteen action items with that one goal. Support land use decisions and county ordinances that are consistent with the management plan. Protect and maintain a thriving ecological balance. Preserve the free roaming nature and habitats behavior of the wild horse population to the extent possible within the boundaries defined in the management plan. Sustain partnerships with the stakeholders, including the state, the county, the Wild Horse Fund, and the feds. And support and offer opportunities to educate the public about the wild horses. Those are the goals within the plan. The advisory board has the following actions to implement the plan. We meet quarterly, we review the, the goals and the action items in the plan, we report on the progress made to accomplishing those, and we have an opportunity, we have an obligation to maintain the agreement as a living agreement and at least every five years update it, which is the purpose why we're here tonight. All of the goals and objectives were supported, popularly supported by the group, but there was and there is a, an issue amongst the four different agencies regarding the proper size of the herd. And so, to get through that, what we agreed to do in the plan is to go ahead and allow each agency an opportunity to put a factual paragraph, a factual piece together to support or explain why they support what they perceive to be the proper herd size. The plan that has been in place since the 90s, that has been adopted at least two other times, has a stated cap of sixty horses total population. This is the Corolla Wild Horse Fund's position. They work with Dr. Catheron, who is a professor at Texas A&amp;M University, and he's recognized as an equine geneticist in the country. He has done studies across the country, and he talks to, about the need to maintain genetic viability in a herd, there is a minimum herd size that is required. His documentation, he talks about a herd size of a hundred and fifty being the common recommended population size for a wild horse, a herd, and viewing in his work with the Corolla Wild Horses, he's recommending that a herd size of a hundred twenty to a hundred and thirty should be the appropriate range. And this is the position that Corolla Wild Horse Fund has established and the position that they're taking seeking federal legislation to legislate this number. The state has a different position. The state's position is that the herd size should be determined by going through a scientific study to determine the carrying capacity of the land identified under the management plan. And until such a study is undertaken that will determine that number, they recommend that we continue to recognize the sixty that's in the herd size, or the original management plan. Fish and Wildlife has yet again a different position. Their position is, there is a, they again believe in scientific study as the genesis of determining the herd size. They feel like the closest study that has been undertaken to date is with Assateague Island, and they've extrapolated from that study on what the, the land carrying capacity is. They've extrapolated over to our Outer Banks, and they're recommending a herd size of between eighty to a hundred. So, you have three different agencies, not too far off, but all having a different view of what the herd size should be. The management agreement does require an annual count of the herd. This count was done in the fall of 2014. I know this graphic is awful small to see, but what we did was, the Corolla Wild Horse Fund actually undertook the herd count, they did it from air, so it is not a accurate dead-on count. So, we do recognize that this number is lower than what we think the herd size actually is. We took that information and we gave it to Harry Lee, and he has graphed it so we can get a sense of where on the Outer Banks the herd is, and we can compare it over time to see the patterns of the herd. This 2014 herd count came back in, is eighty-three. I believe we feel like the number is probably closer to a hundred plus. So, depending on which one of the three methods you look at, we are either in the, in the range or slightly out of the range. There is an appendancy to the plan. It covers some historic data that is in there for just reporting purposes and people's general information. It has some historic timelines, it talks about critical things from when the permit, the KAMA permit was acquired through the updates and various different things. There's, each agency has put a paragraph in there to explain who they are, so you can get a sense of what their mission is. There's some, from the planning department, we have some land use information that over time you can see the developmental patterns that are occurring in this area. There's legislation that not only the Currituck County Board of Commissioners have adopted, but legislation that the City of Virginia Beach has adopted. City of Virginia Beach also has some wild horse ordinances. The horses have attendance every now and then to get up into Sandbridge, and we work with them about locating and making sure that the horses are safe and to returning them back into the Outer Banks. And then there's, because under the management agreement, the Corolla Wild Horse Fund is the entity that undertakes the actual physical work in the plan, they have been asked to develop protocols of the different things they've been tasked with and how they will undertake them. Those protocols are approved by the advisory board, and they're included in the agreement too for documentation purposes. That in a quick summary is the Wild Horse Management Plan. It has been presented, there are, again, four agencies that are the signatories. It has been presented to the other three agencies, have reviewed it, have approved it, and have executed it. And tonight, I'm bringing it to the Board of Commissioners, which will be the last agency to have looked at it and offering it tonight for your consideration and with my recommendation that we approve the same. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Do I have a motion? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
On page forty-eight, one of the things it asks is participating stakeholders. And it does say, the Corolla citizens, shouldn't it say Corolla slash Carova or Currituck residents? I know that's a minor point, but I don't want to exclude the folks that live with these horses year-round as being a stakeholder.
You said it was on page forty-eight?
I believe it's forty-eight, yes. And it's down at the bottom, participating stakeholders. I know, reading back further, we did talk-
We did, we did. Forty-eight of the, um-
Oh, okay.
Of the packet, I'm sorry, of the packet.
In the agenda.
And you said it was in the stakeholder section?
Yeah.
Yes. No, they explained it a little bit better in page seventeen.
Okay, are you, okay, under participating stakeholders, it has Corolla citizens-
Yes.
-as a header?
Yes.
Okay. We certainly can make a note to change that. In the document itself, I mean, that's certainly open for confusing as a header, but in the document, wherever you read, it references residents of the Currituck Outer Banks.
I know, and it does say that in page seventeen as well in that same document, but I just, if we could, I just don't want to exclude somebody who's, without their help, we would not be able to handle this.
So, I'm-
I'd like to add, you know, either the Corolla, you know, and Carova citizens or the Currituck citizens, but at least the Carova would be in there because they are the year-round people that are described in there as well.
Would you, would you object to just having the header read Currituck Outer Banks? Because that's, that's consistent with the language that's in the document.
I'd be very happy with that.
Okay.
The other thing that, I talked with Mr. Scanlon about that a little bit today. And typically, this group has two representatives on that, in that advisory role, and generally they are both filled by off-road citizens because of what you and I were talking about.
Yes, thank you.
Your current two appointees are both in the full-drive area.
Okay.
Which probably should be because that's where the horses are located now. You're right.
Okay, any, any additional, any additional comments, questions? Then do I?
I may make a motion that we accept or adopt this agreement.
With Mr. Hall's-
With, with the changes noted by Commissioner Hall.
Second.
All right, we have a motion before, send a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion passed, and we'll conclude that. So, we'll just have that, that language change in that to be more inclusive.
Yes, sir, we'll have that header changed, yes.
And to be consistent with the body of, of the-
Yes, sir.
Very good. Don't forget to look at State of the Union now tonight, address. All right, next item on the agenda will be under Old Business. It's going to be a second reading for the Red Flag Ordinance, and this is to provide that the county's ocean rescue contractor shall have authority to determine unsafe swimming conditions in the Atlantic Ocean and to prohibit swimming until safe. I'll turn that over to Mr. McCree.
Oh, you ready? Okay. There is within your code an ordinance that prohibits swimming when there are dangerous conditions. Typically, that has been when there are environmental conditions or dangerous riptides that would make, make it unsafe for a person to enter the Atlantic Ocean. In the past, we have had a contract, or the counties had a contract with Corolla Fire and Rescue or its subsidiary Ocean Rescue to perform lifeguard services and ocean rescue services for the county. And the county, and the county ordinance provided for the chief of Corolla Fire and Rescue to be the entity charged with making the determination as to whether conditions were so dangerous that person should be prohibited from entering into the Atlantic Ocean. With the change of the county's contract to Lighthouse Resort Services Incorporated, staff believes and is recommending to the county it's appropriate to change or amend the ordinance to now provide that the ocean, the county's ocean rescue contractors shall be the entity that will make the determination as to whether conditions are so dangerous that swimming should be prohibited in the Atlantic Ocean. This is on for second reading tonight. It may be passed tonight by a simple majority. It's coming on for a second reading because when an ordinance first comes to you, other than one that requires a public hearing, it must be adopted unanimously. And at your last meeting, you had six commissioners present who all voted unanimously, but yet failed to receive the seven required. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, then I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, I'll ask that, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No. Motion passes. Next item is New Business under Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, before you consider a vote on that, I was asked by Commissioner if I would provide some additional information on item number four that's in the consent agenda. Item number four deals with your consideration of a, a service contract with McCleese Consulting, Inc. This is a lobbying firm that we used for the very first time last year. They helped us with several key pieces of legislation that was being proposed in the General Assembly. Probably the most important of that was to place a toll on the Knott's Island ferry route. They were instrumental in building the relationships and getting the contacts we needed to, at least at this moment, to successfully defeat that effort. They have worked with us on the, the new transportation initiatives to make sure that we understand the, the new law and how we can best position ourselves. We provided them a handful of proposed planning legislation. Probably the most significant of that was a proposal to allow fracking in the state of North Carolina with the discharge of the byproduct coming back to the coastal areas. So, they, they, they worked on a handful of, of planning items. They have proven themselves to be very, very effective and very important to Currituck County and, and the last legislation, with proposed legislation that actually would hurt Currituck County. So, and what our understanding is going into this General Assembly, defense is probably going to be name of the game, too, so it's probably more about them helping us from getting hurt with legislation than it is advocating for any particular legislation. And you've got a service contract in your agreement tonight to extend that relationship. If the board recalls, we wanted to put that contract instead of having it on a calendar year to get it in align with our fiscal year, and we have done that. You have a contract in your agenda package tonight that is a two-and-a-half-year contract that will cover, actually covers three sessions of the General Assembly, but it puts the service contract on our fiscal year. And I'd be happy to answer questions about that or any other item that you have in your consent agenda.
Any questions? I just think, just as a, as a general observation, it's, it's become apparent, at least to me of late, that due to the fiscal constraints that the state is in, as well as other states in our union, there seems to be movement to pass down expenses to counties. Those expenses that were previously paid for by the state or covered by the state, we've had a couple since I've been on the board. I think we've had some with the unemployment insurance has been one of them. And I think we've heard rumblings that there may very well be additional ones forthcoming. So, I think this is very important that we have eyes and ears in place to protect our interest, because that would be, you know, it'd be, any transference of costs to individual counties would be a direct tax, if you will. So, I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Griggs, just echoing what Mr. Scanlon said, there's no doubt in my mind, if that had been for them, we'd have had tolls on our Knott's Island ferry now. I know the positions of our legislative bodies before it became a hot topic, and I can assure you, the McCleese's had a lot to do with changing that, plus bringing the, North Carolina House of Representatives, Chairman of the Transportation Subcommittee, that's a pretty powerful individual, got him involved, and things really made a turnaround. They have been very instrumental in, I believe, in helping get the mechanic bridge back on the transportation improvement plan. They worked very hard on legis, or some proposals that were going to allow mobile homes to be put here, there, and wherever, stormwater issues. So, they were a very busy group. And with that, I'm ready to make a motion to approve, to consent.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. I'll ask for a vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, motion passes unanimously. Moving on, we'll go to the Commissioners' Report. Commissioner Bowat, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Attended the Parks and Welfare, or Parks and Recreation, long time flashback. We're about to see plans going forth with Phase Two of the sports complex. In that meeting, they were discussing that they're getting really close to coming to us, and in fact, it may be one of our agenda items for the retreat, trying to come up with a budgetary number by which we can procure those facilities. The second item is, and I get to beat you at this, it's that time of year, Girl Scouts are about to engage in that annual sales endeavor of their cookies. Commissioner Gilbert and I were asked to judge the- Commissioner Gilbert and I were asked to judge the Girl Scout presentation tables, and I was sorry to see that the table that had free samples did not win, but yeah, be looking for the girls and help support them and the community. This year, I believe the focus is taking care of the veterans, or that's going to be what they're raising money for. That's it.
Thin mints get my vote.
In the freezer. Oh, yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Back on the 10th, myself and Commissioner Beaumont were invited to the Carova Fire Department when they had their annual training. We had a chance to sit down with different parts of the groups, watch their training, speak with them individually, including the ladies auxiliary, and I'll tell you what, folks, if you've never sat down with folks and watched them train on a volunteer basis and seen the dedication in 12-degree weather out on the beach, you should have come with us, because it was definitely cold, but these folks didn't hesitate one bit. We were also shown the different ponds, the canals, the draw systems in order to help fight the fires. It gave me a better understanding of something that I wasn't really familiar with. And without a doubt, folks, I want to thank the Fire Department for having us, and I look forward to other county organizations inviting us to participate or view what they're doing. Chief Van, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Idler.
I reported last week about the, what I'd found out to date about the airplanes flying over the marshes and this and another. I've had the opportunity to talk with the DU. They're not interested in getting involved at this point in time. I talked with our game board, the attorney for the game board, Mr. Brumsey. Today, as a matter of fact, he has sent out a request to all of his members to see if they would like to partner with us in sending a resolution or a letter of some sort with our concerns. He said that he felt 99.9% sure that that would be the case, and he hopes to get back with me or Mr. Scanlon tomorrow. So I'm going to ask that, we asked Mr. Scanlon to start to prepare a letter of some sort, and when I say some sort, just to let Fish and Wildlife know that we understand they have a job to do, however, is there any way that they could reevaluate and look at their timing on when and how they do their surveys to not have such an impact on the migratory birds that are in certain locations and causing them to relocate, as they say? We're going to have to send one to the southeast region, which is headquartered in Atlanta, Georgia. Also, the Back Bay Refuge, National Wildlife Refuge, comes under the Northern Division, so we'll have to send one there as well. So, Mr. Scanlon, if the board will be so kind as to give that direction, I would ask to you to start putting something together, and hopefully we'll hear something from the game board tomorrow-
Yes, sir.
...to where we can be inclusive with them as well.
Yes, sir.
And then I'm going to be done with it.
If I could add, if there's, after preparation of the letter, could be embedded in that some mechanism where we could look forward to a response? I just, I've lived long enough, I don't believe in coincidences, and having these flights, what is it, day or two before the hunting season, I think is not lost.
Well, just for, just for the record, I went to a funeral service Saturday afternoon, and I was approached by some people who were hunting on Friday, and the plane flew again at treetop levels over the same marshes Friday afternoon. So that was some upset people, and I caught it, but anyhow.
I think, yeah, but, and the method behind the madness asking for some sort of, or trying to get some sort of a response is the proof will be in the pudding as to whether or not they are amenable to trying to change their time in order to satisfy their obligation or requirement to do the count.
I'll make that in a motion if we need to do that.
Do we need that? Do we need that in the form of a motion?
It's, I don't believe that's necessary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion?
He said, so we don't need to-
Yeah, I think the board is in agreement that we send a letter. We certainly can prepare a letter to send.
Very good, very good. Commissioner Payment.
I just want to reiterate regarding the fire departments, I was glad to see them out here tonight and the accomplishments that they've made for the county and the citizens. And just keep in mind that it is a volunteer organization. It does help keep the cost down to the county and the residents here, so if you have the time, I would urge anyone who can participate and join your volunteer fire department in any capacity, they would appreciate the help. It takes a lot of individuals, you know, everybody's got jobs out there now. The volunteer is getting harder and harder because of the different jobs. It's not like it was years ago. So again, I was just, just want to put a shout out to and congratulate all the fire department and thank them again, and please, if you have the opportunity, contact your fire departments and lend any support you can. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert.
Just one quick thing. This Saturday, the Moayak Women's Club is having a Frosty Toes 5K. This is our first annual event that we're doing, but the Moayak Women's Club offers three scholarships. One that's for a high school student attending a traditional college, one for a high school student attending a vocational program, and one for a woman over 30 returning to school. So this event begins at 9:00 at the Maple Park. If you are wanting to participate, you can participate by going on to www.racet.com. If you don't want to participate, contributions would be greatly appreciated, or if you just want to come out and join us. Our motto for this event is "Freeze Our Buns Off for Scholarship Funds." So if you want to just come out and be a cheerleader, they would greatly appreciate it. Last count, we had about 75 runners, walkers, crawlers, which, whatever, you know, however you want to participate, but I would encourage you to come out and support the Moayak Women. I unfortunately will not be there, but it is an opportunity to come out to support the scholarship funds for the Moayak Women's.
Okay, thank you. And county manager?
Yes, sir. I just would like to thank the folks in the south end of the county for their patience yesterday. We did have a contractor who was working on the Grandi water tank. Unfortunately, he disconnected electricity to a valve that was critical and instrumental to providing water to the community. The community for a period of time was without of water until we were able to isolate and find out what that was. There was never a break in the line, there was never, the water, the line was never exposed, but we did get some calls and we did have a contractor, but I appreciate their patience while we worked through that.
And just to add, I received a call, an automated call, that announced that. I think that's a good idea-
Yes, sir.
-that we reach out and have the automated call so it gives somebody an idea or gives the residents an idea about the timeframe and what's going on, and that certainly probably limits a lot of the calls that you'll get up here as a result of that.
Mr. Griggs-
Yes.
Could I add one thing?
Sure.
We would be, we would be remiss if, we have Mrs. Valla over here with us tonight, and Mr. Woody is certainly absent. And Mr. Woody, if you're watching from home tonight, we know you're busy and your hands are full, but congratulations, our friend. Look forward to having you back. Mr. Woody, everyone knows, has a new addition to his family, and so we're very happy for him.
I would suspect that, I know Mr. Woody's dedication to the county and to his job-
I'm sure he's watching, that's the reason I said it.
He's probably asleep on the couch.
I would suspect that he is up to his elbows in other more pressing manners.
Multitasking.
Yeah. With that, we're at the conclusion, unless there's any further business.
Move to adjourn.
Second.